Okay. Welcome to the special meeting of the Library Board of Trustees, March 18.
There she is.
Perfect timing. So we start with the roll call.
Okay, our roll call. Let's start with Chair Moreau.
Present.
And Vice Chair Thompson.
Present as well.
Trustee Felgus.
We heard her. She said.
We heard her.
She's muted.
She's muted, but she is visually here with us, it looks like.
Yes, I'm here, present. Sorry about that.
No problem, no problem at all. And trustee Yoshi.
Yeah.
And trustee Petty.
You bet, here.
Great.
Okay, so the first item on our agenda for this special meeting is consent agenda, of which there is none. And then we move on to public comments before we get into our new business. So see if there are any public comments.
Great. We like to always explain how folks can join our meeting and provide public comment. And there are two ways to participate in our Library Board of Trustees meeting. One is to join directly on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device. And the second method is to use your telephone and call into the meeting. To join our meeting, please use the link or the phone number that's listed on the agenda at icertchmonterey.org. And you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, please dial toll free 833-568-8864 and then enter the meeting ID, which is 1603013357 pound. And if you're prompted to enter a participant ID, please press pound one more time. Detailed instructions on how to use Zoom is available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand. And if you're dialed in by phone, please dial star nine and then unmute yourself by dialing star six. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. And we'll be calling on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. This meeting is also being streamed live on YouTube at the City of Monterey account. There's a 10-second delay with that service and on Comcast Channel 25, which has a 25-second delay. We always look forward to receiving public comment for members of the public for today's Library Board of Trustees meeting. Back to you, Chair Moreau.
Thank you. I guess there are no public comments, so we'll move on. So we have one item on our agenda today, which is to discuss the proposed staff reorganization and proposed general fund budgets for FY '22 and FY '23 and provide direction to staff. This is in accordance to the budget process being done by the City of Monterey. So I will turn it over to Inga to kind of frame. We have here a report that she has written and some spreadsheets. And why don't you open it up by telling us what's going on and we'll have some discussion afterwards?
So even before the pandemic, we knew that all departments were going to need to look at their staffing and look at how they could streamline their staffing even more because we were facing some fiscal challenges looking ahead, so projecting ahead. And there are a number of reasons why our revenue was going to be lower than our expenditure. But one of the big reasons that people are most familiar with is the retirement packages. And so we knew that going, you know, before the pandemic. Then the pandemic hit and, boy, you know, the city has a shortfall or projected by the end of the year of over $30 million. And to prepare for that last year, the city council made the really very tough decision of closing a number of city services. And they chose the ones that were frequented the most by the public, knowing that the public were not going to be able to gather in the same way that they had before because of the pandemic. But for the library and also for sports center and recreation, those services go on even when our doors are closed. And so we have been scraping by, providing essential services to our community at a smaller scale with a very significantly reduced budget. So then we have time to prepare the budget for this coming year and the following year. And so part of the guidance that we received was, as department heads, was just to be very, very, very fiscally conservative because there are so many unknowns. And with the projections for TOT and for sales tax, and if you need any details about projections, we might ask that. Anyway, with the projections, things don't look like they're going to bounce back suddenly and will be in the same financial position that we were back when the pandemic hit. So it's going to be gradual. And so departments were asked to, you know, to ramp up very slowly if they had been going from this closed position. So that's the setting for then looking at how can we reorganize our staff to be as efficient as we can while we're meeting the priorities that we have come to understand from our community.
So I just wanted to add one thing, just to clarify. And that is that we're not now looking at what's going to happen starting tomorrow. We kind of jumped from right now where we are to fiscal planning, starting in the next fiscal year, because that's the way the city wants it. So this is not something that's gonna, these are not changes that are going to be implemented right away. We're not talking about when we're open. We're talking about if we were in a normal cycle starting in July, what the budget should look like. So I just wanted to.
Thank you. That's a really important clarification. So, right, so this is future planning. What would the budget look like starting in July if there were no restrictions and we were able to open our doors? And how would it look like from July going forward over the next two years? So we looked at what are our core services that we know and functions that we know the community relies upon, depends upon, has come to expect. And so we saw circulation as the one of the most core services that we offer. Then collections, of course, you have to have something to circulate. But if you don't have the circulation system in place, you're not going to be able to circulate anything, even if you had stuff. So anyway, collections were next. Then we know that people have relied on us as a trusted source for information for all ages, for help with school, work assignments, for research and so forth, so information. Then programming. And so that's the priority order of our core functions. And then we know that administration is just a given. You have the costs of administering a library. And then we see our fundraising as a core piece, but we've been funding that through our trust fund. So we're not talking about that very much in this budget proposal because this budget proposal does not include trust fund budget. And then there's the bookmobile. And the bookmobile is a very odd, it's a wonderful, wonderful service, but it's very odd to see where it's placed because it's kind of a little library on wheels. So it could be seen as part of circulation and be right up there in the top tier. Or it's, since it does all of these functions, you know, it could be placed with one of the other ones as well. We know that our bookmobile is critical to our community. It helps us serve underserved populations and folks who are, have mobility challenges. So we do want to get that bookmobile back on the road as soon as we can. So in our reorg, we basically looked at how could we streamline and pare down our staffing and still provide essential services? And the model was if we're open five days a week and providing 40 hours of service. So right now we are open five days a week, providing 40 hours of service. And so that's what we're looking at. So the concept was to ramp up. So we divided the first year into two segments. So the July through December segment and the January through June. And then year two, we lumped it all together. So right now I'm looking at the chart on packet page nine. I want to make sure everybody who wants to follow along has that page in front of them. So for administration, we thought of, well, we need the director position. And that's in the charter. But then we have an administrative assistant position that we thought we would keep at full time, but split it between museums and library. So share the salary for that position.
So. Inga, could I interrupt for a moment?
Sure.
Just wanted to point out that there's a revised version of this chart. And so it may be good to highlight the changes or maybe show on the screen the current version, since any members of the public might be looking at the old version of the chart.
Sure. Is that something that you're able to do for us now?
Yes, to share the screen.
Yeah, to share the packet page nine chart.
Yes, I can certainly do that, waiting for my computer to work here. Hang on just a moment.
So just to quickly let you know what had changed. So for folks who are watching or listening from home, there was a calculation error on this chart. I've shown it in red here. And so new packet pages were published and they're available online if you want to refer back to them. So.
There's packet page nine, and you can see here the general fund grand total and the change.
Right. So what had happened under that bookmobile position is this packet, this proposal is, let's start off with a 30-hour-a-week bookmobile position and the five hours a week of on-call support, part-time support. And then I should have divided that in half, which is what you see here now. But I didn't. And so I had put 76,877 in the column where you see it says 38,436. And then I had put 76,877 in that next column. So anyway, so that was a savings. So the whole budget for year one has been reduced by $76,877, if that makes sense. Thank you. Okay, so from the top, we've got administration. And I should mention too, that you have a library division, you have the titles of the positions, and then you have this FTE column. And FTE stands for full-time equivalent. And City of Monterey full-time positions are counted at 40. I'm talking about the non, I'm not sure about fire and so forth. But for the positions like library positions, their 40 hours a week is full-time. And then we add that column up down at the bottom. And you'll see that this first six months is the equivalent of 10.88 full-time folks. And then since this is a ramp up, if you move to the right, you'll see then it ramps up to 11.88. And then further to the right, year two, we're up to 12.38 positions. So that's sort of the overall scheme. And then going back to looking at the divisions, first we've got administration. Then we've got something called access services. I'm not completely happy with these titles, so they could change over time. But in access services, you would put together our technology, our technical services positions, and our circulation services positions under kind of one umbrella. And instead of having a manager overseeing that, in the past, we've had 2.5 managers in the library. We would have our technology services specialist take on oversight of that function of things. And then we would just have fewer positions there. So we used to have 2.75 in technical services. And now we're down to one point. Now we're, we've decreased it. And that's sort of how to read this chart. I probably don't need to walk you through each line. That's probably not the best use of our time unless you'd like me to do that, Chair Moreau.
I think we can answer the question. Bob had a question and then I had a comment as well.
Okay.
And Bob, you're muted. There.
I just, I just wanted to point out, just one example of how the library is doing its part to respond to the financial situation the city is facing. And if you look at that 12.38 that Inga just referred to, three years from now, not this year, next year, but the following year, if you compare that to the FTE on one of the other charts that's in our packet for today's meeting that referred to last year, we're dropping from 21.75 all the way down to 12.38. So we're not, we're barely 50% or so of what we were accustomed to and needed to provide what the city, our patrons and our citizens required. So I'm just pointing it out, and I think the implication of that should be pretty obvious that, you know, we're not just cutting away the extra or a little here, a little there. When you go from almost 22 to a little over 12 FTE, I think that's a significant contribution on the part of the library toward coping with what the cities face.
Right. I mean, we were thinking about, would we rather stay closed? Or, you know, how many staff do we need to reopen eventually? And the idea is that we do hope that as the city's budget strengthens, then we will look at our, continue to look at our personnel and see what positions might need to be added. We would always be looking at the future and what services do we need to provide going forward, rather than saying, you know, we want things the way they were right before the pandemic struck. Because we know that lots of things are changing. So for instance, we are installing RFID radio frequency tags in our collections. And that's going to help us not have the check-in process as labor-intensive as it used to be. So we know we don't need as many hands touching materials as we did previously. So, yeah, thank you for pointing that out, trustee Petty.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to imply that I thought that at some point in the future, when we're rolling in dough again, that we would go all the way back up to almost 22 FTE. Because I've been an advocate for a long time of how we can offer new innovative, creative programs that will not just meet the needs that we have experienced from our constituents in the past, but actually meet new needs and that things are changing. And it will, could be done with less expense, which usually translates, at least in part, into fewer staff.
So. I think a good example might be, you know, recently, before our closure, we were partnering with various agencies to do our elementary school age programming. So rather than having a full-time position that was doing those programs themselves, we brought in MeEarth, for instance, to do a whole sequence on healthy cooking. And then we brought in folks from the Pacific Grove Natural History Museum to do a whole sequence on animals and plants and that kind of stuff. So there's a way that through partnerships, you can be able to provide a strong range of services that then doesn't mean as many staff positions. Not that you want to replace those positions, but you know, you see what I mean.
Yes, I just wanted to comment. I think it's commendable that Inga was able to completely relook at the library and rethink and instead of starting with what we had and saying, what do we throw away? Or what can we peel off to start completely over again as sort of a reorganization and look at it with fresh eyes and figure out what the minimal staff we would need to be able to run the library as efficiently as it was before. I mean, the hope is that this is, this is the way we will start a bare bones operation. And then, you know, we will be able to increase. I did want to point out that in addition to what Bob said, we actually went from something like 16 full-time people or 16.5 to five in the new reorganization, as I see it. And so the ratio of full-time to part-time is quite, is quite low. And, you know, the hope is in the future, as the city recovers, we can change that ratio because it seems like that's a pretty, that's pretty sparse. And I'm assuming that it can be done with five full-time people, which are the people that are there all the time and can pick up tasks when someone else is out and can, I noticed you went down from one, from two managers to one. So you need somebody who can be there if you're out sick or somebody who can take over managerial functions. And so it looks to me like you've carefully looked at this and you feel that it will be possible, all of the things being equal, to run the library with this kind of staffing?
Well, it's going to be a stretch. I'm not going to say it's going to be easy. In year two, I think we go up to seven full-timers. So we're ramping up from part-time to full-time. And I think that, you know, this is an experiment and trying to be super lean. And we might, we might need to ask for some on-call funds at some point when we are trying this out. And then also, of course, there's the mid-year budget adjustment. So if we discover that we're really in trouble heading into year two, we can always ask, you know, say that we, you know, didn't expect that we're going to have the usage that we do or something like that and see if we can beef up a position. So it's, I think that it's good to think of the budget as a snapshot. And this is what we, this is our best understanding with the information we have at this time. So that's the, so what other questions do we have about the staffing reorg? And did we want to hear from Kim to see if she had any comments, a member of the staff?
And let's hear, should we hear from Jennifer and then?
Yeah. Just quickly, and I apologize for my yappy dog in the background. Within this particular proposed budget, is there in here, I see that there's built in an on-call teen librarian, but do we have funding in here for on-call positions? If. Training, which will help a little bit. Do you need to? Training, which will help a little bit. Do need to hire some additional on-call staff. And then I'm gonna mute.
So unfortunately, you are breaking up for me, so I didn't quite catch your question.
Let me try again and hope my dog shuts up. I'm just wondering if there is any funding in here for on-call positions other than the teen librarian? Should you need somebody to come and fill in for the bookmobile librarian or fill in at reference? Or fill in at circulation? Is there some money? Cause I didn't didn't see anything specifically labeled on-call. And so I'm wondering if you have some contingency funding built in?
Right. That's a great question. There is not contingency funding built in. And what I was telling staff this morning is that we're all gonna be trained to provide service at the shared desk. That's sort of like our core service. And so we'll need to be covering for one another when somebody's out or somebody's away for some reason. That was the thinking. So there isn't a pool, like a general pool for on-calls. That would be a possibility to request a small amount that could be used for whatever kind of on-calls we need. But I, I really wanted to kind of get that, get that thinking in place that we all provide frontline service when needed because that's our priority to our community.
And again, if I could clarify too, my, my understanding is when you look at your sheet with FTE, there are some on-call hours that are built in. For example, the, we use, in, in the city of Monterey, we use on-call and part-time staff interchangeably.
Yeah.
So, for example, in circulation services, you, you've got a library assistant to part-time, which could be on-call 70 hours a week. That's built in. You've got a library page, part-time for 40 hours per week equivalent. So those are some of the quote-unquote on-call hours that we have, but to, to your point, if someone's out sick and there's, there's additional planning, some of that may not be built in. But this budget does account for part-time staff. Is my understanding correct?
Right, but they're, they're correct. They're, they're providing key functions. So for instance, right now with our sidewalk service, we've got three folks who are part-time, who work 20 hours a week. And they are providing that service. They are our essential staff for that service. So it's not as if they're filling in for, you know, when, when Kim is away or when David's off or something like that. And so similarly, we would be, the, the circulation staff that would be at the desk every day when we first open would be part-time staff. They wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a full-time position or a 30-hour-a-week position the way there was before the pandemic.
So, so quick question and then Bob. So do you have such a pool now of on-call funds so that you can do that? Or did you have it before the pandemic, before the pandemic?
Yeah. So if you want to look at the chart on packet page 10, which is a, a pre-pandemic chart, this one is arranged by all the full-time positions, all the regular part-time positions, and then all the part-time hourly. And most of the part-time hourly were, they were sort of subs. So the reference, we had six hours a week of on-call reference librarians. And those folks were the people that would come in when somebody was out sick or somebody was off at a training to fill in, to cover. And but we're not, we're not building that kind of pool into this model.
Bob?
Yeah, I mean, there, there, I'm not sure I agree with Nat because the, there's a difference between part-time and on-call. Part-time means you're not working, say, 40 hours a week and getting benefits and retirement contributions and all that. It just means you're working 15 hours a week, let's say. Doesn't mean that you're on-call. You're ongoing. I mean, and these positions in the chart here, going back to the, the one we were looking at first that had the revisions and that shows 1, 2, 3. Those are ongoing positions that are filled, albeit a lot of those folks aren't working full-time per week. So it's not, to me, on-call is like what Inga just said, it's a sub. It's some that we call in when there's a irregular need for another staff member, like somebody is sick, for example. But these positions, other than the on-call teen librarian, these are ongoing positions, whether they're part-time or full-time. So we shouldn't look at this in the same way, I don't think, as a sub.
Right. And, and to piggyback on that, the budgetary implications are if you don't need the on-calls, it doesn't cost anything. Whereas the part-time, it, it's in your budget and you pay it out. Right? I mean, if they're, if they're sick, then you don't pay, but otherwise you do. So I guess the question is, is, is it prudent to build in some on-call, which won't cost anything if you don't need them, if you don't use them? Just as a contingency so that you, we don't have to keep going back and asking for additional hours if, if somebody's out or if there's some sort of emergency or something happens?
So if we wanted to do something like that, I would suggest that it just be an on-call pool. And then we could use some of those funds for a librarian if needed or for a library assistant if needed. The problem, of course, is if you're not using them very often, then they tend not to be trained and, you know, ready to step in when you have an absence. So there's a little bit of a, a learning curve. And those folks also wind up taking positions at other places because they're just not getting enough hours from you. So.
Can, can the on-call pool be additional hours for existing on-calls? In other words, somebody is working 10 hours and then you need more, so they go up to 15 or something like that, or?
I mean, existing part-time.
Yeah. Right. So there's a limit, there's a cap of 1,000 hours a year. And so when a person's working 20 hours a week, they hit that 1,000 hours after 52 weeks. So if we were, so for the, the page amount that's on this chart, 40 hours a week, we would probably have three people in that category. Or we could have four. So they would each work under 20 hours a week. And so they would each be able to fill in for each other because, you know, they weren't maxing out their hours every week.
So you're saying that there is a little bit of a pool built in already?
Right, in the library page portion.
Well, it, I, I guess the question is, do you think it's enough? Do you think what you have is enough to to take care of contingencies?
Right. I think it's, I think it's prudent to add a small amount to try to cover contingencies. The only challenge would be that I would, I would want us to try the filling in for one another so that we all sort of recognize that's our core service and not sort of be relying on that first. Because before the pandemic, we had a lot of vacancies. So we were really used to seeing on-calls all the time. And they actually, they became super knowledgeable because they worked so much for us. And I think we got sort of used to it and, and we, we really missed those folks and they really felt like a solid part of our, our family. And going forward, we don't have that ability anymore to have such a large, you know, there were 43 of us when you counted all those part-timers. And we just don't have the ability to kind of bring all of those folks back in that same capacity. So.
Another question, and maybe this is for Nat. Does the city have any sort of contingency fund? So in case there's an emergency and some department, like, like what happened with curbside, where suddenly we realized we could not cover with what we needed? Is, is there a pool sitting in the city that we, it could use instead if, in that emergency?
Yeah, there, there's no pool, per se, but as Inga alluded to, at mid-year, if there's a need to allocate additional funding, that request can be made and we can make adjustments. And we, we do that before we run out of money. That's why we do that, that mid-year adjustment. So I commend, you know, Inga and her team for, and, and the subcommittee for coming up with this fairly lean budget, given the, the fact of where we are fiscally. So I, I think if, if there's a need for more funding for on-call or service adjustments or FTE changes from our side, we, we think that can be made at mid-year.
So that, that makes a certain amount of sense is to go with what you have and then reevaluate in six months and see whether it worked or not and then do a mid-year adjustment. It sounds like that's your strategy, that.
Yeah, unless you want to say, add $10,000 or something or $5,000, that's just gonna be a kind of emergency on-call staffing pool right off the bat. And then we might use it, we might not.
Yeah, maybe we, we can come back to that issue after, after we finish questions and hear public comment. And I did have a couple of questions before we get to that. One, the impression I got was that what you, the staffing, the kind of bare-bones staffing that you're suggesting, and especially in year one, and especially the first six months of year one, that we would really need that before we could reopen. And that if we didn't have that, that we probably should postpone the reopening. But I didn't hear you say it quite that way. Is, is that a fair summary of your view of this staffing proposal?
Yes, right now, we don't have the staffing to reopen. So.
Cause one of the things I was thinking about was that, you know, the, the timing, you know, I mean, if, if, if when the city manager's office and finance and the council get, you know, down to really brass tacks and balancing the budget, if, if there's a need to squeeze this further, my sense of it would be that I'd rather postpone opening, either opening the library or perhaps restarting the bookmobile, because they're kind of, in my mind, separate but related, than reducing the staffing level further. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out as kind of a, get your reaction as a question and then we can maybe come back to that later. And then secondly, we were talking about RFID and it seems like that would need to be finished before we would reopen. At least NPL, you might be able to start the bookmobile before that, maybe. I'm not sure. But anyway, I wondered if you could address both of those two issues?
Sure. So I do think we could restart the bookmobile service before we complete the RFID project. You're right about that. But I do think that a lot of libraries close to do an RFID project. So we are closed right now and we wanted to finish that before we reopen. So.
And then the second piece being without this funding, we couldn't reopen anyway.
Right. There is, that, you know, the city council did set aside some funds for reopening and to be used in this fiscal year. And I know that we've used $50,000 of it to help us just provide our sidewalk service and our information service and so forth. And I know that sports center and recreation are using some of those funds as well. And I, I don't know what the status of those funds are. However, we would want to complete our R8 installation before reopening and that moves us closer to the end of the fiscal year.
But theoretically, we could have curbside and bookmobile running while we finish the RFID for the, to serve the communities out there.
Yeah, staff were, were talking about how it, the bookmobile is such a confined space that we wouldn't be able to serve very many people at a time. But at least we would be getting service to a part of the community that is currently not receiving service if they aren't able to come to us. So I, yes, Bob?
Well, I just wanted to say, yeah, I agree with Jim completely that what we see here on these charts with the, the numbers and the staffing and the, the funding required and everything, that and correct me if you disagree, Marsha, but the ad hoc planning committee in our variety of meetings that we've had, I believe we see this as the very, very minimum, both in terms of the programs and services, but consequently, the amount of staff and the dollars required to provide those programs and services. And we see this as the very, very minimum required to, as, as I think Hans came up with the phrase, the no-frills library. This is really the bare bones minimum that we could set, be satisfied with and say we are reopened at all. And if we don't have this, then we're not reopening because it would fail the definition of real, of being able to provide even at a no-frills level.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we talked about. Any other trustee comments before we go on? Kim, do you have any feedback for us? Do you have any thing you'd like to add?
Um, not really. I think it'll, I think it'll be a challenge. I think we'll have a strong team and we'll cross-train and be able to step in for one another. But I know from experience, there's lots of unexpected things that happen. Somebody goes on a medical leave. Somebody's on vacation. We made a promise that, you know, the bookmobile's gonna show up somewhere. And then all of a sudden, it's like, okay, who's gonna be staffing in the middle of the library? And we'll have our small team, but sometimes it's probably gonna get really tight.
Yeah, Kim makes a good point. I think we've tried to say yes whenever possible to special invitations to take the bookmobile to various events, to visit schools or have special groups come and get tours and that sort of stuff. And we're probably gonna be having to say no more and say, you know, right now, we're just focusing on, you know, sort of treading water.
Harish?
Assuming everything goes well, this is fine. But is there a, a consideration of what we'll cut if things get worse? Where would you say this is flexible, this has got more give than something else?
That's a good question. If this is the bare minimum that we need to reopen, then, and and then we had to make a cut, I, we would have to consider our opening hours and the days of the week that we're open. So as I, I said before, this was assuming five-day-a-week service, 40 hours a week. Prior to that, we were open seven days a week, 52 hours a week. So probably the number of days we open would need to be cut back or the hours of op, open operation would need to be cut back. And then, you know, it's, it would be easy to say, the bookmobile gets grounded. But the bookmobile is a, is a really important service. And I would hate to, 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 you know, put that on pause if we, you know, if there's some other way that we could continue to provide that service to those folks.
I was thinking about the same thing, that yes, the number of hours is the one that you can cut back and still have something open.
Bob, you got a comment? No? Okay. Okay.
Can Nat have a comment?
You know, I, I do. I think from the city manager's office, we wanted to acknowledge all the hard work from the, the staff. We know they've been, as, as Kim mentioned, you know, a, a very strong team, but have truly stepped up in providing service to the community through curbside service and other, other programming during a time that's been difficult. And we know, we wish our financial and fiscal situation was much, much different, you know, in, in the city of Monterey. There's an article this morning, if you have a chance to read the Monterey County Weekly, that Celia Jimenez wrote about the American Rescue Plan funding that they came in through the federal government. And as one example, and I didn't- as one example, and I didn't realize that it was this drastic, the city of Salinas is faced with a $14 million in lost revenue due to COVID-19. They're going to receive $50.5 million in funding from the federal government. So their windfall is is massive, which is great for Salinas, and it's a community that absolutely needs it, and and will do great things with the funds to support businesses and residents and deliver services. In our case, the city of Monterey will get $6.5 million. Half of that will get in the next, hopefully, 60 days, and the other half of that will will receive in about a year. And 6.5 million, when we calculated it, is 19% of our revenue loss of $34 million due to COVID-19. So it gives gives us a little bit of a comparison between where we are fiscally. It's it's clear in the entire Monterey Bay area, we have a revenue loss that's greater than any other city in in the region, in the three-county region. And and only last we checked, again, and I keep repeating ourselves when we say this, but only second to Anaheim in terms of economic impact due to COVID, just because of our reliance on on TOT and on sales tax and on tourism, which impacts our ability to fund services. So we're we're still not out of the woods yet. We're hopeful for the future. We're glad to be reopening facilities where we can afford to, and I appreciate all the great work that, and your, all your support too, and the Friends and Foundation for keeping this essential service alive.
Thank you.
Bob?
Well, a- as I said a second, a little bit ago, we feel that this does represent the bare minimum of a no-frills library that with possibly the exception of reducing hours, if there is even less money available, but these represent what we absolutely need to be able to offer in order to consider ourselves reopened at all. But I also want to point out that from the very beginning, we've been saying that whatever we do when we reopen, we want to be planning for the future with new innovative things that may result in cost savings long term, even after the financial crisis is behind us, and doing things in a different way, because the times are changing, and this is giving us the opportunity to step back and examine, self-examine and look at what we're doing. And we're already trying a lot of, or some of those things. And I think that the plan that Inga has put together here is not just the minimum, but I think it's a good foundation for doing what I just said, and from which we could be looking ahead and even planning things to be done prior to when we have the money, so that when the money comes in, we're ready to step up and get something started in short term, rather than saying, oh, we got an extra $200,000. What are we going to do with it? We can use this as a a foundation for planning for if we get $200,000, what could we be ready to do with it? And so as unhappy as I am with how small this is in many, many ways, I am happy in the way it is overall structured. And especially something that Kim referred to and came up months and months ago, the idea of cross-training, and even if it's not formal cross-training, where Joe learns exactly what Sam does, so that if Sam is out, Joe can step in. But with the smaller staff, everybody kind of being more of a generalist than they used to be and able to step in. It's it's kind of a form of cross-training, and I see that as potentially, long-term, a good outcome as well.
Thank you. Okay, shall we move on? Yes.
Jim?
Well, I I have some additional comments, but I thought I'd wait until after we ask for any public input.
Anybody else have some feedback before we ask for public comment?
Looking at the the list of attendees and no raised hands for public input.
Okay.
And and I don't know if we typically break a report into parts and ask for public input from the different parts, but I guess we can. But, okay, Jim?
I I wanted to compliment Nat on his presentation and also particularly Inga and the staff on what's been proposed and the ad hoc planning committee. It seems to me that this is a very good minimal proposal. And it does reflect some, you know, restructuring and rethinking of how we do things. So I think that's all very good. I am concerned that you know, if there's anybody that's absent, you know, I'm I'm still somewhat very concerned about needing to wait until the mid-year budget review, if you know, if if this doesn't work as well as we think it is, and it just seems like there's very little room for problems to develop, and problems do develop. At least in my experience, they almost always do. So I would strongly suggest that we that we add to this something for on-call temporary help. The number, you know, it's kind of hard to come up with a number, but I was thinking of something in the range of $10,000 to $20,000. It's kind of a lump sum for that. So that's one thing I'd like to suggest. And I'd also like to suggest that you know, to the extent that we'll be dealing with this further at next week's board meeting, I think. But in my mind, I'm I'm hopeful that in year two, we might be able to do a bit more than what's proposed here. I know this is kind of a flat budget for year one and year two in some senses. But I'd like to be a little more optimistic that the tourism and even the conferences will rebound a bit. And that hopefully in year two, we might be able to expand beyond 40 hours and and do a bit more than what this envisions. So I'm not suggesting that we that we try to modify the proposal here, but maybe footnoted or whatever, you know, just kind of go on record that we do see this as bare bones, and that we're hoping that as the city kind of gradually, hopefully rebounds, that we can perhaps do more in year two than what's proposed. So those are kind of two related but different suggestions that I would have.
Any, any comments on that? Bob?
I think Jim's point is totally right on. And I would even extend it to say that we should footnote or make it clear that if the financial recovery of the city occurs and continues, we should not just wait till year after next, but we should think about even some lower level of expansion next year. And just, you know, we build and open and create and do more as the city finances allow it. And no, but that that's absolutely the attitude we should have.
Okay, so.
So should we look at the the next the chart we haven't looked at yet, which just sort of does the overall summary of the budget, because we were focusing on personnel? So that's packet page 11. And packet page 11 has three, has four columns. It shows, I think that first column should be fiscal year 20. Thank you. So that was where we were funding-wise prior to COVID. We had a three-point $2 million budget. And then our current year, we have a $1.2 million budget. What we're proposing is in next year, that it be 1.8 million. And then the following year, that it increases to 2 million. And there are three main sections, three main components for the budget. One is personnel costs, which we've kind of gone over. But you can see that we moved from 2.5 million to 820 this year. Now, with the increases that we have requests, proposed that we request, it'll be 1.3 million next year, and it'll go up to almost 1.5 the following year. The supplies and service money, that's our contracts, that's our money for collections. It moves from having been at 3.16, 316,000 to 88,000 this year, would go up to 184,000 next year, and then up to 214. And that includes, since we're going to be outsourcing or cataloging, that includes an increase in contract, because that's a new service that we're going to be trying. And as a result, we're saving about $100,000 in a staff position that would have done that cataloging for us. And then there's also internal service charges, which we have less control over, almost no control over, I would say, which has to do with the ISD charges that are charged to each of the departments. But there is some control when we reduce the number of devices, at least it reduces the ISD budget overall. And then there's the vehicle costs, which if we are continuing to have our vehicle, then those are pretty much standard. We can't really, by not driving it as much, it doesn't reduce, for instance, the, you know, it needing oil changes and stuff like that. And then there's a risk management charges, which again, we wouldn't have control over changing. So that's sort of the summary of the budget.
I had a quick question about that. So with the RFID, I'm sure there's maintenance costs and equipment, but I noticed the equipment maintenance went down, is going down. Does that mean that actually it's less expensive than the old checkout machines or?
So actually, it's the ISD department takes over the maintenance contract for us on RFID equipment, and so they build it into their budget. And so they charge us a little bit more, but they handle the contract.
I see.
Yeah. And they're doing the same thing with Koha, for instance, we have support for our integrated library system from Bywater Solutions. And ISD pays that contract for us, and then they build it into the amount they charge us back.
I see. So your equipment maintenance is just really for local, local equipment and contracts?
So, yeah, so we actually, I should tell you what what this budget doesn't include. So we have three microfilm machines. And we're going to continue to provide maintenance, pay for maintenance on the one that's a digital. But we're not going to continue maintaining the analog ones, and when they stop working, we'll use them for parts. And then when we can't do that anymore, we'll not be retaining them anymore. There's nothing built into the budget for staff development, so no travel, no conferences, no trainings. And the thinking there was that there is more online training happening that's being made available. Be, and hopefully that would continue. But we might put in the trust fund budget some money for staff development. Although we were talking about what a no thrills no thrills library was, and we're thinking probably trainings and conferences are considered thrills, so.
But so, I'm sorry, the 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 line that says conferences, training, meetings has 1750, so.
Yes, that's the board stipend. So you'll remember that. We we've canceled that stipend twice now. So we'll put it back in there. And then also ah, there is a one thing that I overlooked that staff pointed out to me this morning. We're not going to buy any new library cards, blank cards, next year, because we have an adequate supply. But the following year, we will need to purchase a supply of library cards, and that is $2,500. So we need to add that in.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, to go back to what we talked about before, I see the library board stipend, but I also see another 1750 that says conferences, training, meetings, so there.
Oh, so it falls under, the way to read that is, there's an account that's 4209. And it's for conference trainings and meetings. And then beneath it, usually we list out all the individual conferences and that kind of stuff.
Oh, I see. So it doesn't.
So I just included, yeah, one of them, exactly.
Okay. So the 2,000 for the library cards is not in here?
Right, for year two. So we need to, I need to increase the amount that we're proposing, we request by $2,500. Also, there's no funding for promotion of any kind, so no ads in the papers, no radio spots, that kind of thing. Again, I thought we could ask the Friends and Foundation for some funding for that. There's no funding for our teen advisory group. We don't know if we'll be reconvening a teen advisory group. And so that's sort of on pause. Yep. So that's sort of the things that we won't be doing. Oh, and no, no supply money for programs. So if we did a children's craft, grab the supplies and go make the craft kind of program, we don't have any supply money for that, or that sort of thing. So again, we thought we could ask the Friends and Foundation if they would support that kind of activity. Now, summer reading, no supplies for summer reading.
Quick question. What's the vehicle rental? Is that part of your conference and things? Because if not, going to have people with, traveling.
No, so I don't, I don't know. That's a misnomer in my mind. It might make more sense in our fleet services department, but that amount is actually the amount for our maintenance on our vehicle. So it's not a rental fee, although that's it's in the category of rental for some reason. So there are two sort of set fees that are associated with the bookmobile. One is above that called equipment vehicle replacement. So every year, they put money aside to replace the vehicle. And then there's vehicle maintenance. So that's what 4621 I think of it as, but its name in the city is vehicle rental.
Yeah, I assume that's kind of mandatory, that's just in there.
And that's the, that's the estimated, so that's the thing, I don't have control over estimating what they think it's going to cost to maintain the vehicle. What they do is they look at previous maintenance records, and then they average it out over a 12-month period, and then they come up with a number, and then that's what we get.
Inga, it's my understanding, is it correct, and I don't know as much about this one, that those funds to the vehicle go directly towards the allocation for the library's vehicle? It's not like it's vehicle funds that go in and are used on fire engines or other vehicles. It's whatever each year goes into this fund is strictly for library vehicle use.
Right. It's for the bookmobile, and then whatever we don't use goes back into the year-end balance. Right? So they try to budget it a little high, hoping that it won't all get used. But then the equipment replacement that does go into an account that then is earmarked for bookmobile replacement when we replace our vehicle.
Yeah, but if I could just add to that, because I used to be heavily involved in in the vehicle replacement fund, the that is kind of pooled basically in a sense, and it's not not a fully funded vehicle replacement fund, so it's not like that's strictly limited to the bookmobile replacement. So that one is a little bit more nebulous, and you know, to use a scientific word.
I think behind the scenes, there's that kind of thing going on, but the 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 idea is that there's a certain amount of money set aside to replace the bookmobile, and when we need to do that, we might have to negotiate with, you know, maybe we don't replace a police vehicle quite as soon, or, you know, something like that. Maybe Parks doesn't get the pickup truck they wanted quite yet, because the bookmobile needs to be. because the bookmobile needs replacing or something like that, right?
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully Chief Hopper isn't watching.
All those vehicles are critical. I'm not, not making a, saying anything about prioritization.
And if I could switch gears a little bit on, going back to the supplies and services, it may be worth highlighting a little more the collection development materials budget. And that, that used to be, it doesn't show the number here for FY '20. But can you refresh our memory on what that used to be? And this current year, it's zero from the general fund. And just give a little bit more background on that, because that's often a major issue.
Sure. So in 2002, it was something like 400 and, oh, I shouldn't even say this. It was, anyway, in, two years ago, it was $128,000. And it'd been that way for five years or so. It just was flat because of course our, our funding was, was flat. And that was down from, it was twice that amount in 2004. So because of cuts that happened in the 2000s, we reduced and then we reduced again. So we were, we were operating at 50% of what our community had come to rely on in terms of funding for new materials. So this year it was zero. And then what we're asking for is to ramp it back up again. So 64,000 next year and then 85,325 the following year. With the understanding that all along, the Friends and Foundation have supplemented that amount. So actually, two years ago, it was, with their help, it was 175,000. So when you really look at how much, we've gone from spending 175,000 on collections to zero. And then the Friends have kicked in some money and, and other generous donors have started to come forward and support our collections as well.
In one of the charts that Inga gave us in our planning committee meeting that outlined expenses for 2019, '20, that fiscal year. The total for supplies and, well, if you look at the one we've just been talking about, this year, the total for supplies and services is 88,000. And next year, with some things added back, 184. And two years from now, 214, 215,000. In the year 2019 slash '20, the amount in the budget for supplies and services was almost 317,000. So even two years from now, you can see where almost 100,000, in other words, almost a third less, even with these amounts going up next year and the year after. So I think this chart, and that's just one tiny example, puts into perspective how much the library is giving up and leaning over backwards. The 1.2 million that we have this year, we all know, represents a cut from previous year in the neighborhood of 63%. If you look at the higher of these three amounts, little over 2 million, two, in two years from now, the 2 million and 15,000, that is still approximately 38% less than what we had last year. So even building back up over the course of two more years to fiscal '22, '23, we are still looking at about 30, in the neighborhood of 38% less than what we have been used to getting based on last year. And proposing still a lot of good stuff and even more than we're looking at maybe doing when we first reopen.
Jim?
I, I totally, totally agree and appreciate with all of Bob's comments about that. I think that's very well said. And kind of in the same spirit, I wanted to talk just briefly about the collection development and the Friends and Foundation and kind of the role, you know, the, the whole issue of supplementing the general fund budget. Because I know that, you know, the Friends and Foundation have been trying to really step up during this fiscal crisis. And, and I think a lot of areas where they're almost in a sense replacing general fund money, like current, this current year for the, for the materials budget, you know, I think is appropriate. But if you look at it from a long-term perspective, I think it would do a lot of damage if the city tried to take the position that, well, we're just not going to fund books and we'll just go for fundraising for that. Because I think that the Friends and Foundation and prior to that, the Friends of the Library viewed what they were doing as supplementing a basic level of support from the general fund. So we're kind of in a, you know, I use the word nebulous before, I'll use it again, kind of a nebulous area, whether, where we're, we are in fact kind of breaking what I would view as kind of normal rules of the road that, you know, that, that the fundraising should be to supplement the basic support from the general fund. So we've been breaking that rule this year and probably next year. But I think we should try to avoid the city getting in a habit of thinking that's appropriate. Because I think that will really undermine the efforts of fundraising in the long run. So I think it's kind of an awkward issue, but I just wanted to kind of beat the bushes on the issue for a minute.
So it's, it's true, Jim, that the Friends or the Friends and Foundation funding or even our, our, just our trust fund monies were typically, and there's a library board policy about how those funds are used, but they were typically like enrichment. So we knew we had a strong library, but then through this charitable gift, we were able to do something new and something more. An example would be 3D printing. You know, people were curious about what was that all about? And it was through donation that we were then able to acquire 3D printers and, and be able to do some programming there. When we start using those funds just to do our basic core services, then that enrichment, you know, people are talking about, oh, I can't think, you know, lending out Wi-Fi hotspots or something like that. The Friends and Foundation could be launching that kind of program for us. Or three, I can't think, virtual reality. So some Friends groups have helped libraries have a virtual reality in devices. But, you know, instead of doing those kinds of innovative things where we're helping expose people to new technologies that they might not, they wouldn't be able to afford on their own, we're kind of, you know, making sure that there are enough copies of just the basic materials on the shelves. So you're right, that's not something that we want to do over the long term.
So I, so I'm thinking in the vein of giving direction to you for the consideration of the next meeting, beyond what Jim had suggested, which is $10,000 to $20,000 on call additional money that we wouldn't use if we didn't need it, but that, you know, we should put that in there. To, to, to do sort of another column of the supplies and services that if in fact that city's recovery was better than it was and there was additional funding for things like the teen stuff, the supplies for summer reading, all the things that you took out of the budget, to have those sort of out there, you know, understanding that if, if, if there isn't funding, we can't do them yet, but that these are things that should be restored as soon as possible. And if somehow, by some miracle, the projections were wrong and there's additional funding, we'd like those to go back in. Just to, just to see that they're not thrills and that they're pretty basic for operating the library. So those, maybe you could let us know next time with the, the things that you took out and, and they would sit aside there as a, as a, you know, if, if there were additional funding, this will, this were the way we'd like to go.
Okay, that sounds good. And then I didn't know if, if Mary Jane wanted to say anything since we mentioned fundraising. If you wanted to make any comments, I didn't want to not give you that opportunity.
I hadn't, I guess I would say a couple of things that are top of mind. And one is just the deep appreciation for the addition in the trust fund budget, which is not our topic today, of a few hours of administrative support. I think we can spare the board the, how the sausage got made. But Inga and I have a really detailed documented picture of tasks and time. So I think we have a really good grasp of what it takes to keep the program along the lines of what we have now running. And the other comment I'd make is just the reinforcement of what Jim and then everyone chimed in to agree with him. You know, over time, it would really diminish and hamper fundraising if we, as a library, were relying too much for the bread and butter of, you know, all collections or other kinds of bread and butter. It would, I mean, I'm just not sure how we'd message that. And it is not compelling and it would be difficult to demonstrate impact, I think, without, straightforwardly to the donor population. So just to jump on that bandwagon with the, kind of the challenge that would be presented by even trying to do that. Thanks, Inga, and thanks, everybody. And I'm, yeah, I'm very glad to see that contingency money proposed to be added. Just as someone who's certainly part of the team and has been really welcomed by everybody, even though I'm in Berkeley and a lot of the time and such, just watching, I'm not part of the core team giving service. And I just see that it's, you know, it's just barely sustainable. It's kind of unsustainable some of the time. So I'm happy to see that in there. Okay, now I'll stop, I'm getting too opinionated.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have any other, any other comments before we?
At some point, I thought we would invite Nat to say something, to share some information from the city manager's office.
So Jim wanted to comment before?
But it's fine, it's fine after Nat. But I was just going to suggest we might want to, if, if, if others are inclined to suggest adding some on-call money, we might want to focus in on a particular dollar amount. But, but let's hear from that first.
Let's hear from that.
Yeah, I know, just wanted to share again that with all the great time and spend putting this budget together, the city manager's office supports what's been proposed here this, this afternoon. And we know these are, these are hard times, but, but the, the budget as presented is, is a strong one. And many thanks to Inga and her team and, and others. I, I see Inga's time cards twice a month. And I know she works a lot more than the hour she puts in on, on the time cards. And that's weekends and evenings and much more. So very thankful to her. And I know that's, that Kim and others on the team, Mary Jane's been such a great asset to our, our group. Wanted to thank you all too. And, and if, if you do make any changes, we, you know, I haven't talked to our team and our finance team about, about whether there's officially support behind, you know, additional appropriations. But, but I trust that if it's, if it's not, not significant, we, I'm sure we probably support that. I don't know if it goes up to, you know, 10,000, that might be quite frankly, a little bit more than we can have to pencil out. But, but we'll, we'll make it work. And I know, like I said before, and I think it was shared with all of you, at the end of the day, mid-year, if there's a need for more, we can have that conversation too. So, thanks.
That's good news. So, so to go back to what Jim had asked, can you give us a sense of, I know this is hard, but how many hours $10,000 we buy? Can you do a rough calculation?
Gosh, well, maybe we can do a group calculation. So librarians with the tiny benefit they get are $35 an hour. And then a library assistant who could staff the desk with the benefit is $26 an hour. And then a library page with the benefit is $16 an hour. So if we had a pool of $10,000, we could draw from any of those categories.
So if you, if you make it something like 30, $30 an hour, somewhere in between there, if that $30 an hour, it's 333 hours, right? Something like that. And at $20 an hour, it's about 500 hours, right? So does that make, yeah, Jim?
If you go to Pecat, page 10, going back to FY 1920, at that point, the hourly that's shown there, there's a total of 155,000 for three FTEs. So if you look at it from that perspective, 10,000 divided by 51,732 is .19 FTE. So it'd be, if you use that as kind of a mixture of the types of things you might use it for, then that would be about 20% of a full-time position, which would be, what, about 10 hours?
Like 10 hours a week.
I mean, that sounds, that sounds reasonable. Bob, you had a comment?
Oh, no, I was gonna say, if you say 10 hours a week, then you're talking about 400, 500 hours a year.
I'm sorry, my mistake is it would be more like eight hours, not 10 hours, my mistake.
Still, 400 hours a year, maybe, looking at the mixed level of.
Right. So I think we have the same calculation, I said between 330 and 500. So that's about 400. So is that, Inga, in your estimation, is that enough contingency built in that you?
Yeah.
So shall we, shall we say 10,000 or, Jim, you're, you're not happy with that?
No, I'm, I'm, I think, I think that would be not great, but it, but a major help. So I think that's.
So it's a cushion.
Yeah. So let's.
Especially given the understanding that if everybody's healthy and, you know, nobody leaves or anything, the money wouldn't all get used. I mean, it's just there in reserve, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if I could just make a suggestion, since we're not taking formal action today, I don't know that we need to vote or anything, but maybe by consensus, we can suggest that Inga consider adding 10,000 to that particular part of the, both, I would say both year one and year two budgets.
Right. And, and, and we can formally vote on the budget, including that at our next meeting, next week.
Yeah, we're just giving direction today. And I think that's exactly what Jim was suggesting.
Right.
So, and the other part, of course, I need to think about this, but that you might be thinking about too, is that when you do approve the budget next week, you'll want to give me direction about what I need to come back to you for if the city's not able to support the full amount. So if, if a position is, is, needs to be cut, should I come back to you? Or if development funds need to be reduced, should I come back to the board? So that's the sort of, usually I'm given authorization or the directors give an authorization to make corrections. So if I find out the ISD number is, you know, different, then I'll make that correction. Or personnel, once they plug in individual position, people into positions, then the numbers vary slightly. And those sorts of things or adding mistake or something can be corrected. But if it's, has something to do that, you know, with, that'll impact the service, then come back to you with it.
Well, I, I would think if a position's going to be cut, since there are only five of them, I would like to. Well, I I would think if a position is going to be cut, since there are only five of them, I would like to, I think the board would like to hear about them. Does that really makes a drastic change? Bob?
Well, I mean, given what we've said today about how everything we've presented here and talked about needing to do and funding as a bare bones minimum. And also frankly, given the encouraging words that Nat was throwing out at us, that I know they're not official final decisions, but encouraging, at least that's my take. I would be shocked if there was a problem that Inga is talking about. Yeah, I agree, we need to have in the back of our minds what we would do if. But I I'm really concerned that if there's much that we wouldn't satisfy our own self definition of what we can provide and say we're reopening.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges we have on on the where, to use the great words of Jim Thompson. What was it?
Nebulous?
Nebulous, yes. I gotta get that right, nebulous. The internal service charges are the ones that are a little bit nebulous, maybe if if the library board is open. Agreeing to no changes, of course, to the personnel or the utilities, the supply services, but giving Inga the authority to make adjustments to the internal services if they're needed due to our some of the calculations we're doing on vehicle replacement and on information services.
That that sounds fine to me. Any any other comments? Any comments on that? Well, good. That's unsensible.
Okay.
So Inga, do you feel like you've got the direction for what to do for next week?
Yes, yes. So I'll bring back a revised table that shows the library cards, supply item added into year two and the the on call contingency item added into personnel. And then I'll make a side list of things that were taken out, like the teen council money and the supplies money for programs. And just so you have it, and then you can formally say as funds permit, you want to revisit those things.
Jim?
I apologize. I meant to mention, ask this question earlier, and I really should have, but if you if if I can get your forgiveness, I'd like to go back to one issue, which is the the halftime administrative assistant position. If I understand that correctly, the proposal is that the that position would be shared with the museum division, which would be half in each each division. And that's that particularly with with such limited staffing. I'd hate to see that turned into a part time, halftime position. I'd much rather, you know, have the assurance that it's a full time position, because that's one where you, there's so many issues that run through admin that requires some continuity and understanding of city systems and all that kind of thing. And I don't know that there's known funding in the museums division, and I realize that's not under our purview directly. But it is kind of indirectly. So I wondered if Inga, you could or Nat can speak at all to that halftime position in museums? Because if that isn't funded, then it creates, I think, a problem for the library. And at least in my mind.
So maybe Nat can speak to it.
Yes.
Really is a city, you know, city manager's office issue, probably.
Yeah, yes, it is. And and we can we can discuss that further, but you know, the goal is we're we've committed as a community not to have any more layoffs and to retain all of the full time positions. So at the end of the day, we will, if 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 anything, whether whether the zero point five FTE in museums, we split the zero point five museums and library. One other option would be to provide more FTE from that position into the library, which I'm sure you, the library board would not necessarily oppose having more, just not less. So and and we can talk about that. We'll continue to discuss over the next couple of weeks with Inga and our team.
Okay.
We're still we're still figuring out museum staffing and what that looks like.
But that's fair enough. That was part of my concern is that that could lead to a layoff, which I was
No, yeah, we we are we are avoiding that at all costs, absolutely.
Good. Thank you again. I apologize for not raising that earlier.
But that, piggybacking on that, it is is fifty percent administrative support enough for the library? If this were to work out that way?
Well, the thinking is is that there's some admin support built in for fund development from the trust fund, which there had been admin support before. And then our current admin assistant has been helping a lot with programming. So
Okay, so there you think there is bandwidth there?
Yeah. And especially now with the more the more we train our director in publishing board packets and that kind of thing. But no, I I I'm just kidding, but you know, I think there's capacity.
It'll work out.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, Bob.
And if if it turns out, you know, that it doesn't work out to be enough, I mean, one of the very first positions that was funded and allowed when we were shut down after the library director was the admin assistant position. Because that was seen as a crucial piece in the operations from an operations point of view. So I think that if for some reason that halftime FTE turns out not to be enough for it to run smoothly, there will be a lot of justification for increasing the number of those hours because of how, right off the bat, that was considered an essential position to refill once we started, you know, almost a year ago.
Well, and I think that it was connected in part with the layoff of staff in museums, because there were all those admin things that needed to be done for museums, like the museums and cultural arts commission packets and so forth. And that was something that our admin stepped in right away and took over and all the contracts for the different services that the museum provides and invoices and all that kind of good stuff.
So this position was doing that work anyway?
Yeah, so it sort of got added on to that position. And then in addition, the position took on, you know, programming, more programming than had been done previously.
All right, so you have your your the wisdom of the board here and input from everybody else. I don't know, do we need to ask for public input another one more time or? Nat, is that?
We can certainly do that, but we have no raised hands at this time.
Okay. So we I think at this point, I no informational reports, no, no other staff comments. Trustee can't do trustee comments. Should we go through the trustees and see if anybody has come? No need. Okay, motion to adjourn.